Okay, we'll keep you standing then, John. Stand for the flight. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Constitution of the Republic of Canada, and to the Constitution of the British Republic of England, and to the Constitution of the United States of America.
What do you have on the agenda?
Uh, yeah.
Do you have the minutes?
Okay, roll call.
Thirty seconds, sir.
He should have a tree for balsam trees. Yeah, I read that.
Roll call in here. Do you want to do the roll call?
Yeah. President Van Dughey is absent. Vice President Bobby Marika. Councilman John Bullard. Alex Kratzoff. Alfred Young. Attorney General Bennett is absent. Chief Robert Sokowski. Park Board President Donald Glick. BCA President Matt is absent. The Hollises. Building Commissioner Steve Thomas is absent. Webmaster Diana Dupries is absent. And Jeffrey Gunn is absent. And I'm here, so I can change your notes.
Hollis wants to know if he's here.
No, he's absent.
He's not here?
No, he's not coming. He's not going away.
We'll see how fast we did his reading, all right?
Yes, indeed. Okay, uh... Did you give a chance for eight minutes?
Yeah.
Are you here?
The first one is a consultation, it's regular consultation.
Okay, John, do you want to hear about typos?
Oh, sure.
I haven't found one.
Yeah, like a page.
Website, paragraph, right at the end. Last sentence of information, park board and art boosters. Should be part of the series, obviously.
But the last sentence?
Last sentence was what?
Yeah, you don't want art boosters.
Well, for a while, I thought we would have to boost every art book. But I think we're over that.
You think we're over that, right? You said, okay, that's all you could find, and we got the rest of it.
Okay, make a motion that we accept the minutes as your request.
All in favor?
Aye.
Four ayes.
Okay. I need to say that Jim's not here. So we can...
John, when do we have this suspended budget?
Uh... I don't know if I got that down here. I think it's at the office chair, maybe. Then it will go in the newspaper. It's not going to bring out. The office chair has the first deadline.
When do you make first?
Once again, to the accountants, the accountants have it, and then it will be back here for office.
For your first?
My first one.
Deadline?
My first deadline is next week.
I assume we need to discuss these changes? And the minutes from the budget meeting?
The budget meeting is what was decided at the budget meeting. And then all this is settled. Round up the list of the most important things. What is it that you need to know?
We don't have to vote on this?
You have to vote on the meeting minutes. We have voting on the budget.
And that voting on the changes?
It's all right here. If you want anything changed, let me know. That's why we have the meeting, so you can tell me what you needed changed. And some of the things was decided that there would be no changes.
We have a lot of question marks.
Yeah, there is a lot of question marks. Especially with the MVH, as far as the operating supplies, the repair maintenance, and the road paving. And then the road paving is going to be based on the plan that... The engineers did. And then...
Doyle.
Doyle, thank you. And that will be for next year. They're set off each year, so I'll have to pull that up. And operating supplies and repair maintenance, they were way, way over appropriations this year. So I have to just box and tell you what he thinks he's going to have to have for next year. That'll give me a close, otherwise I'll do a guess. Accounting services, I have to find out if there's going to be anything additional on it. And on the website, they've added, we're not going to pay as much as we thought we were going to pay. So we probably can do a little bit less than we actually...
And like I saw in the agenda that you're getting, you need a new computer?
Yeah.
Is that anything above it?
Not yet, but it will be. It probably won't go in any of it. It probably will end up being an additional appropriation for this year because it has to be run by a janitor for a little longer than it may need.
Want to make a deal with who? He needs one.
Probably could. I need to know what he's going to be using the computer for, so I can get whatever he needs on.
Just one more thing, Paul.
Yeah, and another thing to think about, too. I think it would be an entourage to our residents to have him here, if nothing else, except for a couple hours one day a week. If he was like Friday afternoon or something, so... Then you can answer all sorts of questions instead of...
Have to be discussed later, yes?
Well, that should come up when we do a job description task or something.
Okay, so you need a motion to accept the budget minutes?
Mm-hmm.
Change it. All in favor? Four ayes. I move we accept the minutes of the meeting adjourned.
Get your ready agenda. When you did that?
Oh, we did.
Yep. Not seconded.
Well, let's see, what can we ask for?
I'm losing it.
A grace?
It's okay, John, you're keeping us honest. Okay, additional claims, May 2019.
May 2019. Well, I didn't... Right back to the... I'm going to have to July. And then June for the payroll. Might add June payroll to the... We only get one in July anyway, so let's go. You want me to read the whole list?
Yes, please.
Okay. This is to take the payroll records and transfer them to the financials. Employer liability for FICA, seventy-seven dollars and fifty cents. But then entry for the payroll was ten thousand, one fifty-eight and fifty-nine cents. Plan and commission secretary, one eighty-seven fifty. Grant personnel, twelve fifty. One thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars on employer liability for Medicare, eighteen dollars and thirteen cents. Employer liability for FICA, seventy-seven dollars and fifty cents. Non-recurring building fund, one thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. Employer liability Medicare, eighteen dollars and thirteen cents. MVH salary others, seven hundred and forty dollars. Park and rent, a hundred and thirty-seven fifty for department head. MVH department head, a hundred and thirty-seven fifty. Clerk treasure, a hundred and fifty-seven dollars and fifty cents for refuse. General, uh, I'm sorry. Clerk treasure, two thousand, nine hundred and ninety-three dollars and seventy-five cents. BCA president salary, a hundred and thirty-seven dollars and fifty cents. Plan Commission Chair, a hundred and thirty-seven dollars and fifty cents. Part-time office administration, a hundred and five hundred dollars. Refuge part-time, five hundred dollars. Need to check that. It's not necessary. It's difficult going up here when I'm trying to do the internet during these minutes. Employer liability Medicare, one thirty-four dollars and sixteen cents. Employer liability FICA, five hundred and seventy-three dollars and seventy-six cents. On general town council, two thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars. For a grand total of twenty-two thousand, eight hundred and eleven dollars and fifty-two cents.
I have a question. Rent administrative, grant personnel, four hundred and fifty dollars, what's that?
I wish it was me, but it's Mr. Bob. He voted to give him five thousand dollars.
Okay, enough that?
No, I'm answering your question, sir.
Rook's court treasurer, one fifty-seven fifty.
Beg your pardon?
Rook's court treasurer salary, one fifty-seven fifty. Net wage, all. Fire. One fifty-seven fifty.
That's for, we're saying, a refuse department. It's coming to refuse fund. It's a non-recurring fund. And we have three hundred and forty-some customers that have to be overseeing as far as payment, making the bills out, collections.
And then, boy.
Beg your pardon?
General salary court treasurer, court treasurer, twenty-nine ninety-seven five.
Correct.
That's your salary, right?
That's my salary.
Well, it says general part-time office help. Part-time office help, fifteen hundred dollars.
Correct.
What's Rook's part-time help?
Correct.
Five hundred dollars.
Correct. Next, for quarter. Three months.
Now, it's been in the payroll since, I don't know, these ones, Steve's city clerk.
What, what?
That you guys get paid as city clerk?
Oh, I get the clerk treasure and...
This can get paid, just a month. Or overseas even, the president. Been going on for many, many years.
I haven't been, I haven't been keeping track of our hours. I do a lot of work at home, really doesn't do that much at home, but we get track of our hours and we're in the office, and we don't even get ten thousand dollars.
Oh, no, I'm not going into this now. This is not a place for that discussion.
I am explaining to Rich.
Yeah, you're...
Close your ears.
Have we heard it? All right, I like to hear it.
That's too bad, John, I'd like to hear the actual facts. Who are you going to ask them?
John, I do have a question.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
At the bottom, you've got the general town council amount. But way at the top, the second item, what payroll net wages?
Payroll net wages is taking the money out of the payroll fund to pay... And we put it off the bank account so that you can get paid. Because we don't have a separate bank account for the payroll records. So that's why all this has to go into the regular financials.
It is confusing, I agree with that.
So, we put it into a bank?
We put it into the bank account on paper. It's done automatically by EFT.
And then what salaries come out of it?
All of them.
And then why should they be double counted?
It's double counted because I have to take all the records from the summers and put it into the financial record to show as an expense. And then there's ten thousand dollars, which is the amount that we're paying out of it for our checks. It's confusing.
I guess so.
But it comes out. We balance a statement every month, and we balance it to the penny. Like I said, we balance it to zero. That's how close we are. And then we're being down the previous, previous administration and do the bank statements. And trust of the bank. Okay, do you want to raise your...
Well, I don't really understand it, though.
I don't know how to explain it any better than that.
Well, do you see what I'm asking you?
I know what you're asking.
You're saying that ten thousand is covering all the salaries, and yet you're still listing the salaries. And it all totals up to twenty...
Hmm...
Two thousand, nine hundred...
Yeah, it doesn't list. So ten thousand is your net pay, not your gross pay. It's all of our net pays. That's why you've got a fifty-nine cents on it. But all of this has to be transferred to our main account, general account, as an expense, including that ten thousand dollars, which will eventually come out when it's paid because it goes through the bank through the EFT.
Okay, yes, I have a motion to accept the payroll... Payroll tax, what payroll?
That's not taxes, it's good taxes next month.
The payroll's not...
Immediate accounts payroll, right?
Yeah.
Okay, second.
You said it there.
Hey, you said it. All in favor?
Aye.
Four ayes.
John, do you say you don't have the other two?
I don't have any. I only have one for the unanimous for NIPSCO. That's it, I have it printed, the other forms separately presented.
The answer, aye?
Aye.
I could have just signed it out here if you want to, but that's going to be confusing when we do this. Yes, of course, yes, of which I have a right to pay. It's our challenge, right?
And before we go on to the committee's job...
Ladies, I do have a similar question. So wait a minute. I got through the June bill. I told you I had the June one delay, but the signature page is coming out.
You said you had the June payroll.
I had the June payroll, and I have the July, and I don't have the May.
I just didn't want the ladies to have to sit here too long. If they've got a specific thing they might cover, they just... Cover it.
Yeah, this is going to be covered in first report. They have already talked to me, so...
We're not exactly burning daylight here.
I hope we don't talk daylight.
This is July addition?
Yes, it's the July option that I have to date. Okay, well, you pass that around, I overread it. Miss Yanna Shore-Von Gooch, fire department, three thousand, three hundred and eighty-six dollars and thirty-three cents for fire protection. Miss Yanna Shore-Von Gooch, fire department, reds for July, a hundred and five dollars. Town of Long Beach for police protection, four thousand, five hundred and ninety-seven dollars. NIPSCO for town garage for the gas, fifty-six dollars and seventy-one cents. For the electric streetlights, thirty-one dollars and sixty-five cents. Electric for the town garage, thirty-four dollars and sixty-four cents. AT&amp;T for telephone and that's a hundred and four dollars and sixty-three cents. Water, department of water, for water for the garage, nine dollars and forty-nine cents. Water for Ken Kate Park, nine dollars and forty-nine cents. Rented heckment for travelers to the bank and post office, a hundred and fourteen dollars and eighty-four cents. Office depot business credit for no books, dividers, pens, paper, lamps, a hundred and ten dollars and nine cents. Comcast for, um, it's underneath the telephone telegraph, but it really is internet, eighty-six dollars and ninety cents. And applied legal ecological services incorporated. And that is for the white ditch, repair and quarter restoration plan. And the first task was completed at the kickoff meeting that I announced at the last council meeting, and I didn't have one of the council members show up for it. And that was, they're getting voiced out, was one thousand, nine hundred and ten dollars, for a total of fourteen thousand, two hundred and twenty-three dollars and ninety-seven cents.
Is that one of the laptops, two guys?
Yeah, when I asked you, twenty for the park council, you were a member. I...
I still am, I think.
Yeah, that's not what I meant. I'm catching the rest of the energy from the park board. Not realizing.
Okay, I make a motion that...
You got a question, please? Rook's salary services in charge for thirty-six hundred and sixty-seven dollars.
I think it's a bit every month.
Pardon?
That's why it's fit every month.
It's a charge for the service?
For fitting up the brackets.
Okay.
Correct.
Okay. All right, do we approve this?
Okay, yes.
Okay, I move that we accept the, uh, July, the... Thanks for that.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Four ayes.
And I would like to ask council to... Assign a committee to address the job description and tasks of all the non-elected officials. That's harder than it turns out, and there's none in the file. They have only job descriptions, the, um, building commissioner, which is in code, which there's some mystery on now what should be done. But we're doing a committee and writing up this and dying in the role flight to be on the committee if you're a volunteer committee.
That, that said, yes, true.
Oh, yeah, Matt.
I moved you. I thought we agreed the plant commission needed as a committee. I thought it was everything. We discussed.
It was discussed, it was...
So it's already been established, is it?
No, it's not been established. I'll suggest that there's different ones to be on. Is there anybody else? Oh, look, the robot's eyes, anybody can be on.
Well, if we're talking about, um, non-elected, then that would include Mrs. Sokowski, the road...
Everybody, everybody. Nick Sokowski, resident.
So I...
As far as the, um, plan commission secretary. In general, what happens in most organizations, they have employees fill out the list of their job tasks, and then they generally meet with someone. And I would like to be on it.
Well, jumping ahead a bit in the plan commission, we talked about the fact that we have contracts with people. Sometimes, if I'm not mistaken, this past January, um, I don't know, Bob, you didn't get reappointed, did you?
No.
Steve Thomas, I don't think he got reappointed. Brendan didn't get reappointed. I don't know if anybody that think the only thing that might happen is... Think the only thing that might happen is, uh, the three people for plant commission come for the council, that might have been the only thing that was done in January. So we want people, uh, we want, well, if a lawyer, we're been asked to be advisable to have a contract to, and certainly have the job description and then they sign the contract if they want...
I believe that some things have to be employee fees, not a contract. If they're a contract employee, we do not put them on the payroll. They're on the payroll, we pay taxes on them. If they're a contract employee, there's no such thing as a contract employee with what we're doing.
Well, he knows, the lawyer, I agree with that.
I agree.
I agree.
He'll be here next month.
So anyway, I make a motion that we, uh, as council, uh, create an ad hoc committee to go into this, we already have several members.
Our, our committee should be...
Do I?
Our large, uh, committee.
Large is a lot, so you think anyone would want to be on it, shouldn't be a lot, I don't think you can did that many people.
Uh, there may be a problem, you know, consensus is what should be done, most facts will come from the employee themselves. They're going to list what they do.
Well, we can start asking if we...
No, we don't ask, we give them a sheet of paper, the fact they have to fill out, what their job tasks are. And that's how you go about that. You can't have internal control by just word of mouth.
What are you disputing?
I'm not disputing anything.
I was going to suggest that if we go ahead and create this, that we go ahead and ask Bob and Brendan and Steve to give us what they feel their job descriptions.
You mean create the, the committee that you're talking about?
For them. That they go ahead and fill out, what they feel is that...
You're saying exactly the same thing I'm saying.
Well, then don't, don't react.
I'm not coming back anymore, I didn't understand what you said.
Cause you didn't have it finished.
Sorry. No, I was saying generally, the employer gives the employee a form to fill out, they list their job tasks and they also list how often they do it. And then some of them are probably what he gets when it says how often they do it. And that's when the committee can do some acting on this.
Okay, I made a motion that the council create an ad hoc committee, we already know we have four or five members, we...
Do you want to listen?
Many of the town, uh, citizens, uh, watch this program later, want to be on this ad hoc committee to fill out job descriptions for our employees, then, uh, get a hold of Joan, you know?
You want, you have Matt?
David, I know, and Ray.
Ray, Alex, myself. You want to be on it, Rich?
I'd rather.
Rich, you need to... The committee can be split up into different...
Uh, okay, thank you.
So.
Okay. Any other discussion on that? Okay. Uh, look, computer, what? I made a motion, Alex is second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Both say, four ayes.
Okay. So now we can go to the main computer for...
For the first office.
And, if I could show it.
Thanks for coming, ladies.
And if we had concern about, um, rent holds here and the traffic is tough, people aren't stopping, it stops... Do you want, we're going to talk about now, I can hold this all down. I'm just having concerns that, um...
Are they here for the police report or what?
For the police report.
Let's skip this next computer and go to the police report then.
Bob, Salkowski, they were on the record.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, we just have concerns about community.
Now, if you say your name and where you live.
Uh, you can say, I'm here. I'm sorry, oh, my name's, uh, Carol, my name's Sosha. And, um, we're just, this is my sister and, uh, Eli. And we're concerned about, you know, how, um, the rent, how the people, the homeowners are getting all these renters coming in now and they're abusing like all the rules that we have in this area. And they're flying down the streets, they're going forty-something miles an hour or it's twenty-five mile an hour zone. Uh, they're throwing trash in our land. I mean, there was one, um, on Birchwood, they're using it for dumping grounds. I mean, this, I mean, we saw a bird cage and all kinds of other stuff sitting there. You came in and complained about it one time. I don't know what's going on, but don't you think that maybe those homeowners should be held accountable for, for maybe, I mean, they just have like weekly or monthly, or just they should have monthly taxes instead of weekly renters or weekend renters? Because these people are loud, they're noxious and one time there were twenty cars at one house and they were loud all night long. And one of our neighbors was complaining that they were burning something like old leaves or something instead of vital wood. And she has asthma problems and she had to go back in the house and get her inhaler because she couldn't even take her dog for a walk. And she confronted them and they were very rude and they go, oh, we have a right to do this.
Look how a lot of people were complaining, okay, this is not going on.
Okay.
There's a lot of people complaining. When this happens, have them call the police, so they complain about parking, loud noise, and come up and deal with it.
Okay. Now, we didn't know if we were supposed to do anything about it or if that was going to come into it.
Call the police.
But do they call nine-one-one?
No, they're...
What is the...
Eight-seven-four-four-two-four-three.
Okay. I wrote whatever he says, you have to understand the meaning.
There's a lot of people disagreeing complaints.
Is there anything you can do about it or?
Completely.
I would suggest, I don't know if this is going to be good, the county needs to know about these renters, because people have to pay taxes on the money they make. So if you know a specific address, you might try to call the county and turn that homeowner in. I don't know if that would be very good.
Rich, let me say something right now. I talked to the assessors' office two weeks ago with this complaint of people, renters. And what I was told by the assessors' office was the long-term rentals should charge a two percent of your system valuation. They don't pass the seasonal renters. And this is what I was told by the assessors' office three weeks ago, that I inquire because other people question it too. There's complaints of every community, in Buffalo, uh, Michigan, Michigan City, there's people in Long Beach are complaining left and right about this very situation. So this is not isolated here, it's, it's an ongoing problem, I guess. I don't know what we can do. Legally, they have to recommend their homes, okay? But there's not many rules or regulations, which I, I'm not sure if we can do or not, that's why we need our attorney.
But maybe if enough people complain to the county, maybe they'll decide to start taxing the people because them making money and counting dollars or that.
Right.
So, it might be worth a try for them and get others to call and find out, uh, what more county commissioners, are they just one big group or did they have districts? I don't even know.
I think they had districts earlier upon summer.
Do we know all our county commissioners?
There is a town, you know, town should have a big change frequently, I don't...
You got a council that's, that's supposed to take care of Springfield and Michigan township, I, I don't know if they are either, but that's, that's who does us, the council.
Years ago, when, uh, this issue came up, I mean, like twelve or fifteen years ago, we actually considered trying to ban renters, but Bob, didn't Long Beach do that for a while, did it?
Yeah, there was a still valley because when under the...
They were grandfathered.
Grandfathered, yeah, grandfathered in when they changed the law.
That's on January first, attorney guy mentioned that about three or four months before the end of the year. And it was, some of the people on council said, we don't need that, and that's dropped. Now, if we do it, from what I understand, you have to do it per household, they're creating problems or whatever it is with renters, then it has to individually.
Well, again, I think it best to type, you just got to keep calling, get other neighbors that are concerned, follow these people. Write letters.
Okay.
Don't call them, write a letter, send it to the assessor.
Okay.
The simple board.
You either create a drop-off in Michigan City too or just go back.
Yeah, I would find it by the county police.
Yeah, call the police, get a known record, and then the council can do something against one individual homeowner that's running out and creating problems. But you're not alone.
Okay.
You're not alone.
Yeah, it's like, I mean, you grew up here, it's like, it's not the same place.
That's for sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for bringing that up.
Okay, going, going back, can you look Bob's station's report right on?
Yeah, mine's, we'll go with Bob, try to like...
Bob, thank you.
Go ahead, Bob, give it a go.
For about a few, two hundred and seventy-two calls for service. There's forty-seven people gaining a shortage, there were three thousand, forty-four miles hours worked, eight hundred and five and a half, seventeen hours overtime, all that was for training. Our night office worked sixteen hours and the reserves worked eighty-five and a half hours. There was ten traffic stops, Michiana Shores, one citation, two written warrants, seven verbal warrants. One suspicion, vehicle was checked, two courtesy service, five alarm records for the month. Report cited with only one report, now with information regarding attempted suicide. I give it fire department report.
Okay.
Okay, let's go fire department report.
Seven, I have seventy-four point four hours for the month, I was quite busy for months. Uh, twelve with business being, nineteen training, twenty-nine training, special training, we had, uh, Springfield had a house that they were burning and we trained on that. Uh, the second, Powhatan Drive for a fire alarm, also on the second, Powhatan Drive for a fire alarm. On the third, Cherokee Drive, Michigan, Michigan, medical call. On the fourth, Gany Drive for medical call. Thirteenth, uh, Portland for medical call. The seventeenth, Coketan for medical call. Seven, also on the seventeenth, Highway of Toronto, state line, uh, structure fire call. On the twenty-first, went to Miami Trail for a steel alarm. On the twenty-second, Birchwood Trail for lightning. Twenty-fourth, Michigan Drive for medical call. Twenty-fifth, Coketan Drive for medical call. Twenty-fifth, Tohome Trail for a toaster fire. Twenty-sixth, Michigan Drive for a medical call. The twenty-seventh, Powhatan Drive for a rush fire. And the twenty-ninth, uh, Powhatan Trail for medical call.
Five.
So there's four fires and six first responders in Michigan Shores, with one fire, one first responder in Michigan, Michigan, one fire and one first responder in Dune Beach, and one fire and zero first responders mutually. Three more.
Are you doing Dune Beach?
Yes, the fire department entered into a contract with Dune Beach, Bob will remember that we did Dune Beach many, many years ago, we're Long Beach people over the contract. Long Beach decided to, whatever, we now have a new first half of contract for fire medical for Dune Beach.
I've got one thing to bring up, Bob. Somebody keeps parking out here during the daytime on the street by the fire station here, some pickup truck, and then I see a car once in a while. And I just don't think it's appropriate for them to be parking out in front of the fire station there on the road.
What kind of truck is it?
Uh, gray, four-wheel pickup, pretty big one.
For these, oh, is this the guy across the street?
Oh, is that who it is?
Yeah, he was doing that, but he was going in sprays.
Oh, okay.
Uh, that's it.
I just didn't think it was right that he park on the street though.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, back to the computer?
Back to the computer. The, our computer, yeah, yeah. This is what is recommended, um, an opti-plate thirty-six, we, the year price on the computer is eight hundred and seventy-two dollars. The monitor, two hundred and twenty dollars and ninety-nine cents. And then there's a Dell stereo soundbar for when we play back the meeting minutes or do our, uh, how they do webinars over the internet. So when they play it back, we can understand it. Then that was for a total of one thousand, one hundred and thirty-eight dollars and ninety-seven cents. And the computer check, I'll have to put it in to stop and transfer everything from the computer perfectly now, including all the key stone information, and you get a key stone, uh, program on this new computer.
So we have to go on this?
Uh-huh. That's the legal.
Make the motion that we accept, uh... Well, I, we add something?
Yeah.
Alex mentioned earlier about, I think, a, a two for purchase of Steve.
We probably can, but what I need to know is what he needs on it before we can go ahead with this. I need, I just want to use it.
I have to call Steve, Bob, somebody's got to go.
Because we need to know if he's going to be doing all this record keeping and coordinating with the port county for permits, not permits, but for...
Inspection.
Inspections. That's pretty difficult to do with a laptop. So it might be wise to get a standalone and get you a printer and attach internet to it, which we can do, if we put it over in the other office, a few months, we keep over there for, you know, come in a couple hours on, whatever day he chooses. I did have that office cleaned up at one time a week in a month. Didn't last long, did it? Had the telephone disappear that was over there.
And what's been happening with your one?
My one computer?
The one you want to replace.
You can have that. The only thing, it's a seven, um, what is, they are no longer going to maintain, which means there, if something goes wrong with it, you have no place to go with it. But you can use it till it bites the death. I used my one at home a long time before it. Switched, now I switched it because I wanted to make the ten. Yeah, we've got a printer in here, if anyone wants one of these printers.
You put it like you know, that one over there.
Good luck.
You could lay in, move that one over there.
We could hook up there, uh, we could put a line from our internet here, so we don't have to pay extra for internet, so put a firewall in it.
But, we're supposed to...
Discuss that.
We're following.
Where? Well, it's on the agenda.
Well, uh, so the point... Well, uh, so the point is, you want, uh, the, uh.
I want.
The where, uh, the council to buy you?
To buy the loan from the clerk, treasurer's office.
Okay. Is this trading enough, or do we get to keep the old one?
We get to keep the old one, but it was, I mean, it's usable, but not for what we needed for financials, because we do need it, there's something more firm that we need to have it backed up. Now, the seven, I said, I didn't have trouble with seven, I had it for a long time. And that was not, this, this was purchased in 12 or, I think it was 12.
Let me ask the contingency that we can get the program that he needs, forget that Windows 7.
Oh, very, very much so, I don't know what he needs on it. And it will be on pace with what we have. And that way he'll have the internet, he'll have a printer, that he can print things. The one printer that we have is, I don't know why they got such a long bit on their copy, but he might use it for prints and stuff, I don't know.
Okay. Who recommended this particular computer?
Uh, on our computer set, by the name of Jim McKay. He knows our system, what we have here, and he knows what, he knows the key stone stuff. He's working the best.
We knew Jeff Thomas was really good.
He is, but he knows how he's doing, and he doesn't give you a bunch of EBS.
All right.
Did you make motion that?
John made.
Yes, I made a motion to accept the order for the, to accept the fact that the director or whoever lack yet. Okay, was that good?
Was it done? All right, I have seconds.
Okay, good. John made the motion, Rick's second, all favor.
Aye.
Four eyes. Okay, we go, Fire Chief, no, well, we did have Steve Thomas.
Not here.
I don't have a report show.
Darling?
What we discussed at a meeting last time was having a picnic or something over here if we played with those people working at the.
Correct, right, what was discussed? Diana mentioned that she's had certain people ask about council meetings on the weekend. And I'm not a major, I don't know if any of you ones do your weekends at council meetings. But secondly, the people that are doing this AES, that are doing our plan on this grant that we're dealing with, and they would like to do a community-wide announcement, what's been done in the past, and all the great other debates, what's been done in the past, and what we're doing now. And then, um, after that, if they have, people have any questions, can answer questions at council meeting early with what I just mentioned. And then after that, just set up here for, um.
Not as a council meeting, I thought it was going to be like a weekend where people could all get. But I thought we said it wouldn't be as a council meeting. We were going to have something here, like we would the picnic.
It would be, it would be listed as a council meeting, council meeting slash public meeting for, uh, for.
But we cannot say.
Um, we cannot, not a regular council meeting. If people have questions, they can voice it at that time. Not, we're not going to spend hours on it, we're not going to do the regular stuff.
Right, okay.
And it looks like the third, I don't think we can back on the channel, but it's going to be the third.
So the weekend in August?
August 3rd.
Oh, August 3rd.
That's on a Saturday.
Oh.
That's on a Saturday. I still have not got confirmation from, uh, generally this weather. We're going to be able to do such a thing here, you know, as a town picnic. We can do the other, the meeting, the tent, but there are no.
Well, we thought that would be a good way that Tom could hear what's going on.
And Tom gets it. And Tom gets it.
And Tom could get a, push the plug, which probably provide the food, and have people bring, make it pop up like we're doing in the park. But there wasn't anything else that I remembered that was outstanding.
We can be.
Oh, we wasn't saying James were giving the pot on top of the, he was right back. She brought that all the way from where she's from, I forgot.
Cincinnati.
She brought that pot all the way from Cincinnati. Yeah, she brought it in her car. And I don't know who put it up with her, I think.
Chris Wolf from the helper, and my brother and I were out there, we wrote that.
Yeah.
Were you saying something about?
That we can, the 30th, that we can vote for this, how that we could.
Vote for it?
Right.
That's going to be a good timing.
You get to sound that, too?
I would, I would work it out in far.
County Road Commissioner? I attended a class on the Cross Program number 26 about the application process for the next grant. Just going to be going. Status of the true report, I believe everybody has the copy of it. I just got the one from Sandcastle, the senior. I'm going to caution the council that you didn't, I want a recommendation from you on which vendor you wish to use, but the last one from Sandcastle. His vehicle that he uses, a bucket truck, has plates on it that expire in 2013. If that vehicle is out here on the road, that will be a problem. So, little caution. I assume since you give this to Joan, and Joan will make sure that all of his insurance and all the 99 and all the other stuff are all up to date.
I have a 99, but I don't have a state insurance. Do we have a state insurance on these others? I know we've got the W9 in Maple City. And we do have commissioners, but I don't think it's up to date. And as far as the Jones tree, there's, do we, uh, do we get a W9 in? Well, you don't get W9 if you got higher.
I didn't do any of that stuff until we're going to tell them who's going to do it.
Well, you have to know if they're insured, don't you?
Well, I'm sure.
For the proposal?
Well, if you don't know how to use Sandcastle, I guess the cheaper of the next two is Maple City Creek. Well, I wouldn't want to use Sandcastle, because Jim Bob's truck, so I have to get another license. He told me he had it, long time ago.
I'm sure he did. The council is trying to make this decision.
Why don't you guys take some of your buddies and check out Sandcastle?
I, uh.
Make sure that.
I would rather save ourselves $3,000, and we can do a lot more with that money.
My guess.
But I also want to put a time on it.
You can do that.
Well, I would say whatever the time of when you want to do is fine, but make sure that she has all the insurances and everything that are up to date in her office before you order it anyway.
I can't see how you can accept a bid from a guy that doesn't live up to the rules. I wouldn't accept it. Can't put plates on the truck the heck way. That's money that's missing from the town's budget then. We get money from roads. What do you want? I would rather save ourselves money with you more.
Do you want me to follow up with these?
We got to wait another month, then, or the other one get this done?
Well, it might be better to go and follow the lead, to come up with.
I also had a question on, uh, John Tree Service. There's three trees that are around a dead one on Brookside. He was going to go ahead and run all, that's why I did this, 18 trees by this, for whole versus the 15 that's everybody else. There's also another one that Joan sent a quote to, and the name is escaping me right now who it is, but I talked to him today, and he can have us type it, and probably look and give us a quote, so. I told him that in the next time. My recommendation, another one I'm going to kill, if we've been doing this for a while, that all of the insurance and everything else gets brought into Joan's office and complaint for Sandcastle and, which she doesn't matter for, the life loss, one of those vehicles too.
I could give a call for you, just to make sure that there's enough preferential treatment shown.
Okay, right, can you see all that?
John, who is doing the parks now? It's not me, there's other people doing the parks.
Do you have any help each with that much money?
No, we didn't hear you, John. I don't know, we had.
They just got on the ground and applied that stuff. It's all the district's there, doesn't it?
That's what I understand. I got what I heard from another landscaper. Just whoever's doing the park was throwing their trash from the park into my old area. And when I was there, I saw them throwing these big wrenches in my lots. And the guy, the guy picked up a lot of them. I see one of the one big tree at the edge of my brush driveway in my yard. Big pile of leaves all around there. The whole thing is covered with leaves, so. And it's some cowboy or something that's going to cut the head, I don't know who it is, that cuts the lots, and who all these people are, I don't know.
They're kids. Yeah, I'm going to give a bill for that, because my fast money. You're sure he brings me in a bill if he has, that's all, I don't know. I can't, the wire room, all you have to do is call him.
Yeah, because I know it's not the same prop.
Well, he just bought him a bid, it's obviously himself with this, if he's been on his tree job.
Maybe he's not, no, around, or he's sticking with trees.
Yeah, I don't know. That's what I was told, and I know it's different people up there when they start throwing trash in my yard.
Well, I know that, what's this iteration, and, mm-hmm. And they verify, they have to be verified, that they're eligible to work in United States.
Well, the right table is for next month then? Is that the plan? I think so. After he verifies and ensures.
Good one, now. Okay, here, he verified and ensured.
All right, I made a motion, the table is for next month. Thank you.
You want to follow up?
We want a motion on that? Okay, all taken, aye?
Aye.
Both same, twice.
Okay, red to change it?
Who said it? Plant Commission?
I did.
John? Did you vote?
No.
You voted no?
No, aye. Okay, Plant Commission met last Tuesday, we were all better for Jane. There were no building permit pre-approvals needed. Steve Thomas talked about a couple roofing permits issue, which doesn't have to come with Plant Commission. Then we got into some of that discussion about what we were talking about earlier, about getting, uh, job descriptions, and do they need to sign a contract? Very interesting. Well, thank you to the lawyer over here, we're no more. Matt wanted to know why we were talking about that, and Alex said that because he was having the building commissioner, uh, now some of them are requesting he be the COVID enforcer. And then the discussions reminded that for the, for the zoning, he is already the enforcer of a lot. So the recommendations, we are covered to create a committee. Joan was there, suggests Tom, so. But if we do, um, something about COVID enforcer, then a whole lot of our ordinances are going to have to be changed, because they either describe the chief of police as an enforcer, or the, the buildings commissioner, not well, I don't know, but, at least the jurors. So then Howard told, well, Howard made a proposal that we recommend that the town council should review the ordinance that are in the stand for the building commissioner, and then adjust salary of the building commissioner if he was indeed made into COVID enforcer. He was also brought up about computers, we're talking about that earlier. Under old business, we didn't have information on things that we talked about previously. And that included Danny Clark, he's planning to build that house over there, for the Calhoun and Oak Hill. But he contacted me this week, and wants to meet with me, and I'm going to hire up the map. He just wants to show what he's got, and I guess make sure that there's no things he did here that he needs to do. But of course, he'll be totally yes to the plant. I was hoping Steve would be there, because he's the one that contacted him about contracting them for this, this fucking thing. I guess that's it, we were done, right? Okay, can you take the first BCA?
No, there's nothing on BCA, there's not 434, and there's not the, that's, I need to access your permission.
A motion?
Resolutions, compliments of our attorney. The first one, uh, ordinance to the building commissioner. Attorney guy, this note, uh, so electrical language to pass the law, courtesy of Senator LaHatchett. And a human to building officials to create an ordinance dealing with building officials conflict. The law is found in IC 36-1-27-1.
Okay.
Right, and that's one of the things, he says he would like to support this. He thinks it's an emergency to get it planned, because it was effective July 1st. And he got, we got to get behind it, signed it, both readings tonight. And if you want me to read it, or somebody else wants to read it?
I won't, you can all be read it?
I can read it. Town Michigan shores ordinance number 2019-03. And ordinance of any, the town code provisions concern the building commissioner to comply with the new state law mandate. Whereas Indiana general simply have passed Indiana code provisions into law, that mandate in order to provide for conflict intervention provision for the town building commissioner. Now therefore, we are dating that the town council has a legislative body of the town Michigan shores of Fort County, Indiana, as follows. Section 1 intent is the intention of the town council to adopt an ordinance mandated by Senate enrolled at 142, public law 3-2019, in compliance with Indiana code. In compliance with Indiana Code, Chapter IC 36-1-27. To establish a procedure to address instances where the building commissioner, building code official or inspector as a director, indirect financial interest in the issuance of a permit. As defined in IC 36-7-4, 1109B. Section 2, reporting a conflict. Because the building commissioner, building code official or inspector may not issue a permit as specified in IC 36-7-4-1109B. And which includes an approval location permit, a building permit, a certificate of occupancy, approval of a state specified development plan, a primary or secondary plan. A contingent use, conditional use, special exception, or special use for planned unit development for oversee issuance of a permit through base of ordinance. The building commissioner, building code official or inspector has a conflict of interest. Set official must report a conflict of interest in client commission or client commission president and shall make a note of it and the building commissioner will take the report to the town council. Section 3, procedure for temporary replacement. The client commission at its next meeting, which shall conclude its meeting on the same day as the report being made. Yet applicable, shall review the report conflict of interest and indeed to be natural direct or indirect financial ventures and the issuance of a permit. Certificate of approval shall appoint a qualified temporary replacement building commissioner to act for that manner, case and application purposes. Section 4, emergency man, clause, and emergency is hereby declared for the immediate taking effect of the position set forth in this ordinance. So that it shall be in full force, been effect immediately following its passing and adopted by the council and retroactive to July 1st, 2019. All which is or being adopted in an act of the 9th day of July, 2019, dated by a majority of vote of the town council of Tom Mishanshore of Fort County, Indiana.
And I think we can pass this just by reading the ordinance number and taking a vote on it then?
No, we have read, already read it for the first reading, the second, we just pass it by the title.
Right, okay, so we'll just read it as title, if that's okay with everybody?
It's already been read. It's already been read, I read it.
Okay, you read it, so we vote that?
First vote, we vote.
Okay, so we need a motion to accept?
So.
Your main. Second. Motion and a second? We got it, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Both saying, four ayes.
Well, now I have to suspend the order of business. So I make a motion that we suspend the normal order of our tender of business and take a second vote by your title only.
It's just ordinance number 2019-03.
Yep.
Then we can vote on it again.
In a second.
Okay, motion.
One, we need a second to suspend the order.
We gotta suspend the order first.
Or we suspend a second motion.
Rich, did you make a motion and change?
To suspend.
Just to ban. Okay.
Aye, four ayes.
Four ayes, okay.
Okay, now I make a motion that we pass this new ordinance by title only on the second.
Second.
By title only, you need ordinance number 2019-03. If ordinance amending the town code provisions concerning the building commissioner should comply with the new state law mandate, right?
Right, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, four ayes.
So that was Rich and Jake, or John? That is Rich and Jake, is that?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay.
So we sign it? Did you got to sign it or what?
Yeah, I got your copy here. Maybe you could give your copy to give it a look at.
Okay. Accepting donation ordinance?
Yeah, I know, we should have the next one. I'll wait till they come back.
Second vote?
Yeah, we need a vote.
No, not yet. That's no.
That's new. Give, give.
So resolution, we don't have to read it, do you?
We aren't just entitled to check.
You what?
It's not important, you don't have to read this whole resolution.
Right, you only need one name, one one reason.
Well, this resolution is entitled a resolution accepting a land donation subject to entitled check and review of the designated.
Foster land on Brookside Drive. Foster is the gentleman who owns the T S Y phone track.
Land on Brookside, Bruce, Brookside Park.
So Brookside between Cocogen and El Porras. Next door to some of the property.
Well, Bruce there is the name of the donor.
It's the name of the donor.
That's not the Tuckers land, is it?
Who's?
Jerry Tuckert?
No, Jerry Tuckert, Bruce, Bruce is.
How many lots are there?
One lot.
One lot?
Just one lot and it's next door to, and he wants to donate it to the town.
All right, so.
Okay, I make a motion that we accept this resolution, 2019-01.
Second.
Rich and Alex, second.
All in favor? Aye.
Four ayes.
So Joan used to be on record, the only thing he pays like fees to transfer the land, right?
Transfer the title, there's a fee for recording which has.
A wake-up call.
Right, and the disposal form has to be done, but I don't know if I can do that. And he has to sign it. So if you back, if you give it to him, then God love him, sir.
Destroyed with all his people, less English, still taking it for heaven.
I know. I wanna make a ready.
Oh, we didn't start.
Right, we have some demons. Yes, wishes for. The doctor's aid, what?
Anything on the grant?
On the grant, I covered some of the grants already, the one that for the repairing quarter, what you're carrying quarter restoration. On the bank stabilization, excuse me, on the bank stabilization, the RFP should be ready next week. We haven't been laying it, so once we get the RFP, it'll be sent out. So that we can get the proposal back and make a decision. First, our authority. So they owe us a communication to cater to the office, not a loan. We received a note from Steve while she's willing to volunteer to help organize a town life, but we pick up.
Who speak Welsh?
One of our residents that's on Sunset Trail.
What's he gonna do now, what does that mean?
This is me. Well, he did it by, he liked to get together with somebody and, you know, since we could organize a town life, we pick up and I think we, we need some, last year was a mess.
It's a mess every year, Joan.
Well, that's what we want to solve.
All right.
Okay, and the other one is, another one is from Todd Barber. Says he and his neighbors would like to have a town remove tree rings that are hanging over Pop Hat in the area of the house number 1921. And also a couple neighbors farther than Brookside. And another one was from Sidney Mayer, called to state that one of their cars has a tire gas in it from Pop Hall on the corner of Chippewa and Three Walls.
Who is that, Paul Hockeck?
It's going to be on the payment, I don't know what's holding up the payment.
That street's gonna be paid by the city, so that should be.
That's what I just said. But I don't know how big the pop hole is, I guess.
It's buried, oh, it's buried, it's two of them.
Did she want the town to pay for her tire?
She didn't say, somebody needs to contact her, or contact the family, because two people have been here.
I wonder where this gas is, it's off the heart of Pop Hall, put a gas in it.
That's one of the areas where we have.
Most gases are on the side.
But it's rich, one of the things that's a problem in that area is speeding.
Is what?
Speeding.
Speeding?
Speeding.
How do you spell it?
S-P-E-E-D-I-N-G, by the driver's.
Speeding, I thought you first said bees.
I had bee too. All right, it's not my ears.
Hey, you're speaking.
Guys, any public comments?
At least I can hear it on the internet, which I can't hear a lot of you people. You mumble and I can't, that's why some of these minutes are what they are because I.
I got one comment, like the nature path, there's still a tree in the creek and the nature path needs to be mowed, it's getting up there, people afraid to walk through there now, give it a, be careful of jungle and stuff. So they also had to plant a hurricane, get down and get the tree out, so that was part of the deal before. Okay, is there anything, have you talked to anybody about it?
No, I'm sure it's still in there, usually it takes care of it. Since the park board booster kind of aired the creek. Would you contact next, see if you can get out, try to hail it down, see if it's still around.
Yeah.
It's, it's not a full tree, we're not gonna, is it a whole tree?
I haven't walked on it, I see it from the bridge and it, it looks like, it looks like a tree, not like.
It's a wall, right?
Okay, it's like a creek, it's not a lock.
Going back to your communications, would you not, are we gonna do anything about the?
That's up to you guys, it's not up to me.
Oh, I.
Do you have to check it out, mom's left her anyways.
Oh, is that somebody trying to start a business? No, me?
That's another tree issue.
I don't know where that is, what happened?
It says that these tree rings are over hanging Pop Hat, I don't know if they're over hanging.
I know, mom, I'm glad you're on top. Have a soul.
Okay.
That's what, public comment?
Yeah.
Public comment?
Public comment.
She did still a public comment. Council comment?
We're going back to the communication.
Well, communications, all right, we're back at communications now.
Which one, you jumped over after the John letter. I, I also think we should form some kind of leaf bill. So I'm, I'm willing.
I'll find you the second of her if you want to. I can either call you and come in and talk to him.
I mean, we've gone through this before, it was usually voted down. But if we did like the gardens, like everybody pays, then I don't think it would be that much.
Well, that would save the problem of people who don't sign up for are putting their stuff on people who do sign up for, which.
Oh, I do have a comment about, yesterday I went to take the fun things that I had on the, the.
Cezanne.
Cezanne boat and it was ripped down and just on the ground. Somebody tore it out, like maybe it was Colin Kaepernick.
It's been over there every morning.
It was in the afternoon, but.
Yeah.
They just left them on the ground.
We got wilding in the town again, I don't know, that's what the numbers complaint was on and.
No, I have a feeling that somebody probably doesn't like our country like too many, seem to.
Well, whatever.
Yeah, there's anybody, I seen this, saw anybody do it, I wish they'd have come with us.
This country is the best in the world, guys.
Well, we used to be like the best soccer players.
Yeah, there's no country like this one, but of course it's imperfect, nothing is perfect in this world. That's what I keep telling my students.
John, what I used to tell my eighth graders was we're not perfect and we probably never should be because then there would be no reason to strive to be done.
Hey, that's a good idea. Yeah. That's what they've been said about the declaration of the event. Make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor?